Okay, it's six o'clock. Hello, everybody. This is the Town of Reinbeck Town Board Meeting for August 10th, 2010. Would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like a motion and a second to approve our prior minutes for our July 13th regular Town Board Meeting and our July 14th special Town Board Meeting. Thank you for the motion. May I have a second? Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion from the board members or any comments or revisions? Everybody's okay? Josh, are you? Is Josh on here? Oh, yeah, Josh is here. Okay. Any Town Board, everybody okay?
I'm trying to fix my video, but I'm fine with that.
Okay, I know you're there. All right, thanks, everybody. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I am going to go out of order a little bit tonight. We do have a public hearing, which I am opening up. It's a public hearing with regard to a local law amending Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of revising the district schedule of use regulations to allow a motor vehicle repair and service establishment in the ORP zoning district pursuant to the issuance of a special use permit and a site plan review and approval and to and approval and to provide criteria for such use. I know that the applicant, Scott Hutchings, is on with his planner. We do not have a revised law yet to lay down on this. Dan and Scott, we wanted to briefly talk about where we were. And then the board was going to schedule an attorney-client to get actually, we're going to schedule a public meeting to lay a special meeting to lay down a revised draft of this law, which we will release to the public and you in advance. But I think we're in agreement on one point, and we just wanted to talk about the second point. Warren, do you want to take this?
Right, we had some discussions about some changes to the law, which I think the applicant has reviewed and is comfortable with the one change that has not been totally agreed upon as the issue of the enclosure of the structure and the service doors. But I think that we can come to terms on some language, which would allow the planning board some flexibility on permitting the doors to be in the front of the building, depending on issues such as buffering and setback and the site plant. So I think we just have to tweak that section of the law and ask our planner to put that into a final form, which we should have in the next day or two.
It's I'll get it with this 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 week, and we'll get it to you, Scott and Dan.
And then to move things along, we can put this on for a special meeting if everybody's on the same page and accept the revised local law and set it down for a for a public hearing.
Public hearing. Is that all we have to say about this? Do we want to discuss more? I think, can I tell everybody that we're fine on the inclusion of cars as a product? And where, Scott, are you on?
I'm on. I can't seem to get my video to work, so I'm sorry.
Elizabeth, it's their exclusion as products for purpose of outdoor storage.
Yes, and we're fine with including cars with that, Scott. Where we are on doors is that we realize it's a huge property, and our only concern is that doors not be seen from, you know, the roads and that you, we want you to have flexibility to put them where you want to. But again, since we don't have a master plan for this property or no ultimate ultimately what's going to happen, we want the planning board, we want to say that doors should go on the side or back when possible and give the planning board the right to change that or let it go wherever you want to in a site plan review, just as sort of with the 50 not to not to go be under 50-foot setback, have it be 100, but let the planning board go to 50. So it's just a slight allowance for a planning board oversight of doors to go in the front.
Okay, and you think that that language will be available before the end of the week?
Yes, we're going to ask Jim to do it.
Okay.
Do you? Is this something that, you know, do you understand our, just why? I guess, are you okay with where we're going with this?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I've got to see the language, obviously, but I understand the concern.
Okay, so Chauncey, will you make sure that you and I call Jim tomorrow and we get him going on this?
I will.
So I don't know if anyone here wants to comment on rugies. We do have a public hearing open, but we're going to continue to hold it open. Warren, do I have to give the date to which we're holding it open?
Well, we're going to, when's our next Town Board Meeting, September?
September, but Scott, we want to do a meeting sooner than that so that as soon as we have the language for the law, we want to have a meeting so that we can lay it down and have the 30 days to to vote on it. So I'm pushing, I'm hoping we can do a special meeting at the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
Supervisor?
Who's that?
Dan Schuster.
Hi, Dan.
Hi. Could I just suggest, when you're looking at the language to to put in the law as you're going to revise it, take a look at the language that we suggested back in June, which is, I think, addresses a little more clearly the the objective and the intent of the of the regulation as a as a background for everybody so that
Dan, will you send that to me and the Town Board again, please, and Jim Levy?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, I don't think we're far apart at all, and we understand and accept what needs to be done there. Our hesitancy is that there's no master plan, and we just want the planning board to have the final very short word on one little aspect of this, which is placement of doors in the front. And we're all fine with it if it can't be seen, but we don't know what's going to happen to the property ultimately.
Look forward to the language and the next upcoming meeting.
Elizabeth?
He's on.
You have to unmute.
You're muted, Elizabeth. You seem to be muted.
I don't know why that happened. Okay. Warren, are we taking more comment or are we holding it open because we don't have the final law?
I mean, we can take comment, but, you know, it doesn't make sense to comment on the law until it's in final form, but
This is a public hearing. I don't want to step on anybody, but we are revising the law to allow the use of cars as a product and to allow the doors to go on the rear and side of the building and the front of the building only with planning board sign off. Okay, our next meeting, Joni, when is our next meeting? Does anyone know?
September 13th.
Should we hold this open until September 13th?
Yes.
To be continued, we'll hold, we'll continue this public hearing.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, 14th, September 14th.
Oh, thanks, Chaunce, Monday, September 14th. And we probably, we will be scheduling a special meeting to further discuss, to lay down the revised law, and we will get it to the applicant and his planner before that. Okay? Any questions? You're welcome, Scott. Thanks. Bye, Dan. Bye, Scott.
Thank you.
You guys have anything else to add to this? I know we want to talk about Wells Manor. We have some residents here who, I'm going to ask that you wait until after. We have Chris Shale here, who's the attorney for the why do we always forget their name?
The housing.
Foundation Housing. I always want to say Housing Foundation, but it's hi, Chris.
And John is here as well, if he wants to turn on his
Oh, hi, John. Come on on. Hi.
There he is.
Okay, I guess you guys take it away.
John, do you want to?
Yeah.
Start it with the request?
Yeah, so, you know, we just want to circle back. I know it's been a while with COVID and the pandemic to circle back our for our request about getting a tax exemption for our acquisition and rehab of Wells Manor apartments. We put together an application paperwork about numbers and questions that you guys had and just wanted to see if there's anything else that you guys need at this time to make a decision and to vote on that exemption or resolution for the exemption that Christine has put in front of you guys.
Before we, Warren speaks, before I turn it over to Warren, I just want to say that, well, Chauncey, I might mess this up. Do you want to say it? We're all very much support and are in favor of Wells Manor and the type of housing that it is for seniors, and we want to see it continue. But we do have questions and concerns, and we haven't really heard from the hospital. So Warren, can I kick this over to you?
Yeah, I think we were waiting to, one matter that needed to be resolved was the request of the Town Board to have the applicant pay the cost of having an expert come in and advise us on the financial aspects of this. Is that something that you're not willing to do or what's your position on?
I took it to my board, and they said they're not willing to pay for those funds. I mean, we presented everything as far as the facts and figures of the deal in front of you. And at this point, this thing has dragged on long enough. My board is not willing to make any additional payments for that. It does not want to, you know, pay for you guys to hire someone to tell you that the exemption will funnel and fuel the rehab at the property.
You know, I just want to correct that your statement that this has dragged on enough, it has dragged on because we didn't hear from you. I mean, it's not like holding this up. You know, we've asked you for information, and we asked to hire someone to understand this. And for the public, I also want to say that Wells Manor is entirely entitled to a year-by-year total exemption, but that's not what they're asking us for. They're asking the Town Board to decide on a long-term lifetime exemption. And we feel that our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers demand that we have more information. But Warren, Chauncey, I'll let you speak more to that.
I think you've said it very well. We did get some kind of signal recently, I understand, it didn't come to me, about the possibility of a conversation with the hospital/ NuVance. We think that should occur. I think the general feeling probably of the board at the moment is you'll all correct me if this is incorrect, but that after this meeting, we will follow up on that immediately. We are going to need an attorney-client meeting for a couple of reasons. We'll do that as quickly as we can.
But that's only to seek advice, the attorney-client.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And we will get back to Chris and John quickly. And and John, I can't, I can't resist, so forgive me for this. You did say this has dragged on. You shut it down for four and a half months.
I understand. We were dealing with COVID to make sure financing was still I'm not doing that, but
A lot of criticism.
I've been, I've been up at your Town Board since, I don't believe, November, December of last year.
November and January.
We brought everything to you guys, numbers. We supplied those, that information that you guys have asked for. And then you came back with wanting to hire a professional or expert in this field and ask us to pay those costs at this time. And I've talked to my board, who said they are not interested and willing to do that. So I believe that's been conveyed to you guys over email through Warren. You know, ideally, we do want to move forward the transaction and take care of the tenants at Wells Manor. But, you know, we, we're going to need you guys to come through with tax exemption. And if you guys don't want to entertain that, that is fine. We understand. We can move on from this transaction and spend our dollars somewhere else, you know.
That sounds like I just want to reassure the residents that Wells Manor is entitled to a year-by-year exemption, but that's not what we're being asked for. We're being asked to give a lifelong exemption to a non-for-profit, which we support the idea of affordable senior housing. We want you to live in affordable housing that's in good shape. We want them to renovate, but they have not given us the financial information that we need to carry out our fiduciary responsibilities to taxpayers. That is the only holdup, and we haven't heard from Foundation Housing in four months, but
So Elizabeth, could I just chime in a little bit? Because I think we did provide all the financial data that you asked for.
Oh, no, Chris, you gave us financial data. Yes, you did. And it's quite a thick packet, you know, inch and a half, two inches thick. You did. In fact, John distributed it at our January board meeting. It's not that you didn't give us data. It's that we don't have the expertise to fulfill our due diligence obligations to analyze that data. That's why we've been asking you to pay for the cost of a consultant to do it.
Okay, but I just want to be clear that we, we, we were very forthcoming with the data. In fact, we provided both the information about our financing. And I think that it's important to remember that a year-by-year exemption isn't helpful from a financing perspective, and we've talked about this quite a bit, that what we're looking for is the assurance that the financing is there. What John's company is looking for is the assurance that the the exemption will be there so that he can get the financing necessary to fund the renovations. And and, you know, his transaction is to purchase the property from the existing entity and keep it in, you know, not-for-profit ownership. And that's really the goal of this project, so
Back to you soon.
See about the project.
So what Chauncey said is true. We don't have the expertise to fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities to our taxpayers, because we're looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue, and we have to know how the deal is structured. But we certainly support Wells Manor and subsidized affordable senior housing.
And we will get back to you soon.
Yeah, just so the applicant knows, we are going to try to expedite this and do our due diligence internally in the next week or so. And we will, this may be another subject of a, of another special meeting.
Probably when we do
Before our September
Yeah, I think when we do, we'll add this as well.
We're as anxious as you are to have it behind us, Chris and John.
Yeah.
We really are. We too have other things to do.
Any other questions or comments, John, Chris?
No, I don't have anything.
Are we allowed to say?
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to hear from, just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Karen Trevelli. I'm a resident here.
I'm Ellen Crystal.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, we're very interested in this tax exemption status because I don't see Wells Manor being maintained in a way that is productive or safe for this community. I don't know where the money is going to come from to do that. The hospital has been very clear in a meeting they had here. They're not interested. They want to sell Wells Manor. They're not, they do not want to be landlords. So kind of stuck between two issues. What I understand on your side, but then again, you need to understand the way this place has been structured and built and maintained. And right now, it's in desperate need of maintenance. So a sale is important to us because it's not just about living here. It's about living here safely. So there, would you like to say something?
One other thing is that the foundation of this, the, this was given to the hospital as a place for low-income seniors or affordable housing for seniors. That was the original intent for this. We've been here since the 80s, I believe. I don't, yeah, 45 years.
Thirty-five.
It has been part of the community. It is part of the community. And the people that live here contribute to the community.
Yes.
So it isn't as if we're just, and it's not, it's not subsidized for this is independent senior living, but it is definitely a place that we, we have a right to be here. And we, and as I said, the person that donated the land had this specific purpose in mind when they willed this land.
Ellen, are you saying that the land couldn't be used for profit?
I'm saying what it was, the intention of the person who donated the land. And that's something I would love for the hospital to make more clear.
But we'd like, that's what we'd like to. And we want assurances that, you know, we visit Wells Manor, and we want assurances that the deal is going to take care of the condition that needs some attention.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else? I see there are other people. I don't know if anyone else on here would like to speak about Wells Manor. But, you know, please, please realize we support your, you, we support you being there. We support affordable housing for seniors, for other people, and we'd like to see it.
So you understand this is HUD housing, so it's a forceful under the, the way HUD operates, it's one-third of the income. And so it depends if you have a high income rule. It's not, everybody is not in the same, but it creates a very diverse community of people. And so it isn't just that everybody is living, you know, not paying, you know.
No, and we're proud that we have that in Reinbeck.
Reinbeck needs it, right?
Reinbeck needs more of it. And we want to see it in good shape, and we want to see you thrive there.
Thank you.
Could you explain the conflict you're having as far as the offer they're making, the prospectifier? And what your, I mean, I hear your issue is tying into something nonprofit forever. I mean, like, you know, nothing
That's not it. That's not it. The Foundation Housing or whom whoever owns Wells Manor has the right to a year-to-year full exemption given by our assessor. But the Foundation Housing is asking us for 40 years of full tax exemption, which could be fine, but we don't know how the deal is structured or or what's going to happen with the money that's used for the sale and purchase of this. So we need, we need more information.
That is the information that you probably have to get from the hospital.
Yes, we've had, we've never, that's the elephant in the room. We've never spoken with the hospital about this.
Yeah, I'm surprised because they were
What, John?
Are going to be used for?
I'm sorry, what, John?
So there's, there's a difference between the hospital and the ownership structure that currently owns Wells Manor today.
Yes.
Wells Manor is owned within a housing development fund corporation. That corporation has a certain set of rules that they have to abide by, that the state attorney general approves and reviews. Okay? Now, the board members on the HDFC are also board members on the hospital, but they are two completely separate entities. And so the current owner of Wells Manor has to get state attorney general approval for the sale of the property. The state attorney general has also mandated that any proceeds from the sale of Wells Manor has to be used for affordable housing. It will not go to the hospital. It will not go to the parent company, NuVance, or anything like that. They must use those proceeds from this sale of this property for another affordable housing property. We are in discussions with the the board members about a possibility of using those proceeds in Reinbeck for future affordable housing. We're also talking to them about other places and localities within the Tuchus County and the state of New York to use those proceeds. So there are proceeds from the sale, but they have to be used by the state, according to the state attorney general for affordable housing.
So we'd like, we'd like to see that here in Reinbeck. We would.
Well, I mean, if you guys don't, that is the goal, but I mean
I'm sorry, you sound impatient with us. We don't understand the structure. We're trying to seek understanding, and I feel like you're angry and impatient with us.
No, no, not at all. I mean, I've been trying to be transparent and forthright with you guys through the whole process since the first time I met you. You know, I've answered every question you guys wanted. I just told you what the proceeds are going to be used for. Where the board members for the current ownership decide to invest those proceeds, it will be used for affordable housing. Where, I can't tell you that. We've had discussions about other developments within Reinbeck to use those funds because they have additional land holdings. But, you know, right now, the, the, what we, what had to be focused on is the actual moving forward of the sale of Wells Manor and the rehab for the current tenant base at the property.
Okay, well, we, we, we support this idea philosophically. And we need, we, we have to decide if we Chauncey, help me before I dig myself into a
We have work to do. We're going to have an attorney-client meeting, perhaps another meeting. We'll have a special meeting if we can, as soon as we can.
And we can have a special meeting. Yes. All right, thanks. Hang in there with us. We want to see Wells Manor flourish and be what it's supposed to be.
Indeed, I think we're unanimous about that.
Yes.
Yes.
Those are board members chiming in, folks.
I think this will benefit the community as well as the members here. A lot of Reinbeck residents send their parents here because they can stay
We want, we want more of this housing. Reinbeck is becoming unaffordable. We want more housing for our seniors to age in place and their children to start out here. We don't want our local community to be priced out of a town that's fast becoming ritzy.
Very, very elitist.
Yes, we don't want to see that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good night, folks. Thank you.
Warren, I think we're done with you. You can run off in the rain to your next meeting.
Okay, all right. Talk to you later.
Chris, Warren will be in touch with you, and I'll try and schedule this as soon as possible.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Sure, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, I'm gonna go to item number five, Resolution 202168, our capital projects abstracts, two checks totaling $35,122.22. May, I will, I've made the motion. May I have a second?
Okay.
Is that Chaunce?
It was.
I just want to say that this is our final payment, I believe, for our townwide reassessment, reevaluation.
Very good.
I'm sure everybody's thrilled with that, but I have more parity now. My taxes doubled, so I know we're good.
Bring the mortgage.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 202169 for the preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 66 checks totaling $272,711.38. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ellen. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2020170, budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Wow, Ed, thanks. I didn't think you had your audio on.
I didn't. That's why I did that, to make sure I had it on.
I know you were waving wildly. Are there? Is, are there any questions or? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'm going to go back to the top now. Item number one, Resolution 202164, our intermunicipal
Item number one, resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-four, our intermunicipal agreement with Duchess County for snow and ice removal on our county roads, River Road and South Mill.
Okay.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Ed. Is there any discussion? We did this last year. We view, uh, us taking care of River Road as an improved service only because we're here, we travel it more frequently, so the snow removal is much more timely. I think it worked out great in, uh, last year.
It's basically the same agreement, right?
Yes.
So the per mile, the per mile rate is the same as last year?
Yes.
Yeah.
It still helps a lot and we go over this. I didn't ask for an increase. There's COVID out there, the county's suffering. This helps us and we can well achieve it within the budget. It helps us.
Okay, good.
Yeah, uh, next year, we'll see when finances approve, we'll, we'll try and go for. How come you're on two things, Josh?
I don't know. I'm figuring it out.
You're just fancy. Okay. I, I, I thought about asking for an increase, but during COVID with what the county's going through, it just didn't seem right.
Oh, yeah, I don't.
And, and we have to travel the road anyway, because it's.
We travel it anyway, so we might as well be putting our plow down while we're traveling it. And it's an increased service for our residents.
I figured it out now.
Okay. All right, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Um, okay, this is the really fun one. I think Chauncey's going to pull names out of a hat. Um, I'd like a motion for resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-five for appointments to the ethics board of Fleischauer, Freeman, and Perotto. Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Um, uh, we're drawing lots to see who's filling the shorter and the longer term. So, uh, hold on, Chauncey, I've got to get the, uh, just bear with me. Okey-dokey, uh, pull a name for term-ending genuine.
Whoa, 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 wait, wait, please. One more.
Oh.
When I, when I talk, when I kind of worked on this during the day, um, I decided that things in the hat wasn't such a good idea.
Okay.
I have a jar with marbles with four, four different colors. Now, because it'll work better and you can see what I'm doing. I don't want anybody to complain that this is an unwitnessed.
That you're, that you're rigging an appointment to the Essex Board.
Exactly. Now, we have, we have four vacancies on the board. And we need, need to appoint people to fill the four vacancies. Um, one of them is for a term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, one for a term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and two terms to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. So what I propose to do is the following. Well, first, before I tell you what I'm going to do.
What are your colors?
Our four.
Okay, you do it.
Our four, our four candidates in alphabetical order are Mark Fleischauer, who is a Republican. We can only have two members of any party on the board at the same time. Our present, our one incumbent whose term expires at the end of the year is also a Republican.
Was, that's, that's, um, Tony.
Tedesco, Anthony Tedesco. So Mark Fleischauer is a Republican. These are in alphabetical order. Sunny Freeman is a Democrat. Joe Gelb is a Democrat. And Beth Imperato is a conservative. The four marbles are these colors, also in alphabetical order, so I didn't give anybody a color for any reason. Mark Fleischauer is blue. Sunny Freeman is green. Joe Gelb is red. Beth Imperato is white. So those, those four colors are here. You can kind of see them.
Okay, you pull and I'll try and figure out where they're going.
Well, no, 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 no. Patience, Elizabeth. I'm just going to take one out. Blind, blind draw. I mean, blind pouring of the marble into my hand. The color of that marble identifies a candidate. That candidate for appointment will take the term that ends this year.
Okay.
The second marble that I pour out of the bottle will identify the candidate whose term, who will fill the term that expires December twenty.
And then the other two are twenty-two?
Yes, and the two remaining will have the term to two thousand twenty-two. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. Blind draw. I'm always worried as I was practicing this that I dumped the marbles on the floor. So far, so good. I have one. It's the blue one, which is Mark. Mark Fleischauer. So Mark will serve to the end of this year and then there'll be a reappointment and guess who.
Joan, I hope you read it.
Deputy dog.
I'm sorry?
I, I was just talking to Joan Winnie, who's here, uh, but I've got it. Next one for the term.
I'm getting it.
I know you are. Term expiring twenty-twenty-one.
Mark is number one.
Yep.
Next one. It's in order, green. Sunny Freeman.
Holy.
Will take the.
Joe and Beth expired, uh, the end of the year twenty-twenty-two.
Right, done.
Can't say.
Good job.
Yay.
And I didn't spill the marbles.
Thank you.
Practice, practice makes perfect.
Oh, yeah, I went, I spent hours on it. Gina had to help me and everything.
Um, can I ask for a quick, um, break for personal reasons?
Sure.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Me too. Got to be careful not to lose any of these that are in our Chinese checkers set.
Oh, jeez. God, I haven't played Chinese checkers since I was.
Thank you. Waiting for Ed and Chauncey.
To some extent, this group is like herding cats. Once you let, once you let them out.
I love cats.
Yeah, right. Do they come when you call?
No.
Exactly.
Like Chauncey. Just waiting for Ed. Is it raining in the, uh, other parts of Reinbeck?
It's pouring.
Nice, we need it.
Yeah, I guess we do. Even though we had a big one, uh, about a week ago, right?
Thursday, was it Thursday?
Yeah, yeah.
It burned right out, though.
It's just light here in the river.
Ed? Yeah, we're all back. Thank you. Um, I'd like a motion for resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-six, restrictions on quantity of cemetery plots purchased by a single buyer. That's item number three. Ed, can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I knew you would.
And I'll second it.
Thanks. Um, um, this is the recommendation of the cemetery committee that, um, only fifty plots is to be set for sale at, to one person at one time.
Right, otherwise they need our.
Except for Kaplan. Except for Kaplan, who we already approved this year.
We did approve that?
He's going to buy more than fifty plots.
We did approve it?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Um, so.
Yes.
After Kaplan, uh, everyone is capped at fifty unless we, uh, reveal it. Seems, and that's what the cemetery committee recommended?
Yes, and that's what Suzanne Kelly recommended as well.
She's the chair of the cemetery committee. So you guys, thanks for your work on this. And, you know, I want to, thanks to Suzanne and Gary again, because they take such good care of this cemetery for us. So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks again. Um, uh, resolution, item number four, resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven for a fee proposal for engineering services, uh, by CPL engineers and Ray Jerkowski for a road study on White Schoolhouse Road. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I heard three. So I heard Alan and then Ed. Alan as a first and I'll take Ed as a second.
Okay, Ed.
Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Um, um, item number eight. Does that? Resolution twenty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-one, recreation programs for event.
Ah, okay.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, so I, uh, I spent some time talking to, uh, the acting recreation director earlier today. Uh, if we, we charge for the, we, there are no charges on here. If we charge for these programs, we're not going to make back anything like what they cost. So far, the, the craft bag program has only had less than ten kids involved. So if, if you think we're going to have a lot more, uh, probably won't happen. So, uh, what I suggest that we do is, uh, is do the two less expensive ones and, uh, see what kind of turnout we get.
Yeah, that sounds good because the twelve hundred dollars is a, is a lot.
Yeah. And, uh, and charge a nominal fee, something like maybe five dollars per family to come and we'll, we'll lay out the grass that had, with, uh, social distancing circles on, on the grass so that the families can be separated from the rest of the people there. So the mad scientist thing would be done on the lawn between the, uh, on the, on the lawn across from the library in the park and.
You know what, Alan? We're talking about seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. We didn't do cyber camp. If we're not doing the big ticket item, I'd support just doing that.
For free.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good for, I'm.
You got it with that?
Yep.
That's a good compromise.
Okay.
I totally be cautious with our funds. We are financially stressed, as is the state, as is the federal government, as is the county. But, you know, we want to do something, even if it's not, you know, just, just as a, um, just as a sort of, um, gesture to the community.
Yes, uh, okay.
You and, and Carrie for putting this together. But Joni, we're revising this to do the, uh, August nineteenth Mad Science Rocket Show and the September second, uh, Agricultural Society's Ag Educator, not the, uh, Clear Water Sloop music. Those two events, uh, for free for the public. So let's vote on the, uh, revision of the resolution. Uh, all in favor of the revision?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Ed? Okay.
Now, are, are we saying that the Hudson River Sloop Clearwater Program is definitely off the calendar now?
Well, we're not having another meeting, uh, unless, oh, we are if we schedule the special meeting for rugies, but I, I think we are. Unless we want to bring it up, unless somebody wants to bring it up again. But I think that this is a nice gesture. It's for free. We're, we're not going to lose a ton of money if no one shows up and we don't have to charge anybody.
Right.
So thank you, Alan, and thanks to Carrie for putting.
Yes, thank you. Carrie really put it together and Catherine.
Um, and Kate, yes, Mrs. Mustello and Carrie McCurdy. So thank you. Um, two things for discussion. Uh, this week we had another unfortunate situation at the Thompson Mazzarella Park where a, uh, woman was walking her dog and on her phone and I think not holding the leash. So technically the dog was not on the leash and the dog bit, uh, another woman, another resident. Um, not a nip, the other resident felt it was a somewhat aggressive bite and she did have to go to the hospital. The dog owner is being charged with, um, aggressive dog, walking off, off-leash dog and an unregistered dog. Um, this is one of a number of incidents we've had with people not cleaning up, people walking their dogs off-leash. Is it time for us to consider not allowing dogs at Thompson Mazzarella Park? I raised that issue.
Certainly would, would help solve, solve the problem.
Okay, but I don't have an answer for that. We have, we have dog waste stations there and we've tried patrolling it. If people are going to, I don't know why they can't just obey the rules and be.
Because they don't. So that's why we can't do nice things.
It's another enforcement issue, though. You know, you, if I had a dog and wanted to walk it, I would drive all the way down by the volleyball court with a dog in my car and then I'd walk to the far end. I think people will use the park anyway.
Yeah.
We could, we could attach.
They'll find a way, like they're finding a way to get into the pool area if they can.
We could attach a five hundred dollar fine for dogs. The, the point is, is that we have spent money on waste stations and we're still finding a plethora of waste and we've had several attacks where people don't have their dog on leashes. We're developing the park for our residents, our human residents. We're all dog lovers, but if human residents can't, you know, control their, their dog, I mean, we have someone who unwittingly, the dog owner, a wonderful community member, and the woman who was attacked, a wonderful community member. But you shouldn't be attacked by a dog and bitten when you're in our town park.
And I suppose it's just a matter of time till something worse happens. Rabies or a really terrible attack.
Or not, but certainly the waste and the dogs off the leash biting people, I, I think we have to consider, you know, not, making it not allowable.
No, I, I, I know. It's, it's, it's too bad, but yes.
Okay, so we'll put this on our next agenda and notice the public so everyone can come out and yell at us. But this is a park that we're investing money in for our, our human residents. We wanted to include our canine residents, but we're finding that owners aren't that responsible at times.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other thing is that, you know, we are opening the park a little bit. We're doing these two programs. Stephen Cook, the president of the library, wants to hold a, uh, Friends of the Library book sale and has asked our permission to use the pavilion. Um, it's certainly healthier out there than in the library and, um, I, I support it. I'm hoping you guys would too.
Yeah, let's use it for something. Good idea.
I mean, we're still not allowing it to be rented out for parties or gatherings, but the library is another taxing, you know, entity and they will make sure that everyone adheres to COVID and they'll be able to continue with some of their normal business. All right, so I'll tell Stephen we're fine with it?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Great. Um, is there any other new business or any discussion items that anyone wants to talk about?
I have one.
Oh, good.
I have landfill.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Uh, the landfill, I sent you all an email about it. Um, the DEC wants us to start mulching in there or else we have to shut it down. Uh, Bob and I were in.
I just want to clarify this for the, for the public. Ed, I want to clarify this for the public. DEC has cited us for allowing people to bring leaves and branches to the landfill, which is capped and they have said unless it is mulched and spread out, we can't do it anymore. So we've been cited by the DEC.
Right, exactly. But, uh, as I said, we, we got in contact, Bob and I got in kind of with Rancourt. Their land clearing, yeah, they do Reinbeck Village, they do Pine Plains, and they can do that whole thing in a couple of days. But because we have so much, so much there right now that this is going to be, perhaps, But because we have so much, so much there right now, that this is gonna be, perhaps, uh, we might have to get them in there for two days, but also we have to rent a dozer to move some of it around. So it's gonna cost, but we have to pay it either now or later. It's gonna cost about $8,000 for the first shot. We won't have to do it for another three years, and at that time, it'll probably be $6,000. So it'll be $2,000 or less. We can push it off the rest.
Ed, will this make us compliant with the DEC?
Yes, Bob thinks it will. He's pretty sure it will.
What can we do with the mulch? Can we give it to people to clear it out, or?
That's a problem. No, we're gonna spread it around our area there because to, it's too labor-intensive. It'll cost us a fortune to, to give it away, to have to start taking it out of there. Uh, it's, it's just not worth it.
Um, do we have to do it this year?
Well, if we don't, here's the problem. We have rez, town residents calling me already because they have no place to put debris. You've got storms. Highway is still gonna continue to use it because they have no place to put debris. They have to bring all the debris from all the storms into the landfill, so they are still using it anyway.
So we have to put $8,000 to get this done this year?
Get it done, I'd say, within the next couple of weeks, or it, I, it's gonna, as I said, it's gonna still stay open for, uh, highway because they have to use it, so why not leave it open for a few?
We'd have to do it for highway anyway because the DEC has cited us.
Right, exactly.
So we don't have a choice?
That's what I'm saying.
Sorry, John.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
We have to do it.
Alan, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, it made sense. I just, it sounds, though, now like we have a new line item every year to mulch what's up there as well.
Or every, every few year, every third year. The, uh.
Third year, we have to mulch it. That's not that big.
I see, thirty.
If we open it to the public, is that gonna increase the load on the, and require us to, to mulch it more frequently?
No, no, that's including the public.
Okay, got it.
Will it be less if we don't open it to the public? But the public needs a place.
And getting calls, they said, like, I only, I, I got a call from somebody saying, I only have three things from the town, and one of them is the landfill, and you're gonna take that away. I have no place to take my.
Yeah, we have to, we have to do it. We have to do it.
I know, we have to, but we have to.
Ed, you've got to remind me to work with, uh, Shelley. Oh, we'll fund it for our next meeting.
Okay, because we're gonna try to get.
There's really no use for the mulch. It's just garbage, Ed.
Well, we had to truck it and deliver it. It's very labor-intensive, so it costs.
I understand that, I understand that, but no one would want to pick some of it up, or that's just, uh.
Well, then we have to open it and have somebody there and load it. We, we could consider that, but let's just look at, get, taking care of our immediate problem, in, in my opinion.
I, I agree.
Can I tell him that possibly we'll have it open by September? August is out.
Why?
Why, why?
Can't we just do August?
Can't, I mean, I'd like to. I, I, I think we can. As I said, Bob doesn't think we're gonna be rushed. The E C isn't gonna rush in there and look at us, no.
Let's do August, and we'll let the D E C know that we'll have this mulch by September, and we'll figure it out. Do, do you guys think that, agree with that?
Yeah.
We can get away with that. That'd be great.
Oh, yeah, they're not gonna come in and check us. They're not.
Okay, now that we're talking about this publicly in a public meeting and, you know, let's make sure the DEC is okay with this. I would like to keep it open for, when's our next mulch day?
Uh, next mulch day is the end of this month.
Okay, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a special meeting, so we could approve it and get it done before then.
We can approve it, but we're gonna have, we're gonna mulch it. Uh, he has two weeks. They can do it in a couple of weeks.
Uh, do we have a competitive bidding issue?
No, we don't. It's a county thing.
Oh, we're on the county contract?
That's right.
Hey.
Okay.
I love it when a plan comes together.
I got my bases covered.
What are the three things, just out of curiosity, what are the three things that the resident said he only asks the town?
Oh, I don't know if the other two were. I was only interested when he said landfill. He didn't get it, so I thought. I don't know.
Landfill, highway.
Call me, thank you. And then I called him back to tell him we're working on it. He was excited.
All right, when you let him know that we've solved it, ask what the other two things are.
I will. I'll say we're leaving it open for August, and he'll be very thrilled. Thank you. On his behalf.
Well, no, it's important for our residents, so we're gonna have to do it.
I think so, too. That's why I'm doing it.
I know. You're good at these projects. Anything else, anybody?
Well.
So we're gonna have to call a special meeting, I think, for, uh, Rugies and Wells Manor, um, and I guess we can.
Okay.
Well, I think so. Um, Chaunce didn't wait with us tonight, so, um, we'll do that via email. I'll have the, uh, clerks make sure that Warren's available, and we'll get, um, Jim Levy's draft out and, um, lay it down and proceed.
Did you have a date for that special meeting?
No, we've, we've got to make sure Warren's available.
Okay, got it.
Well, and we have to do a little organizing around.
Yeah, we have to, we have to have some answers first.
Okay.
All right, everybody. Um, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, everybody. Thank you. Good night. We'll see you sooner than September. Bye-bye.
Bye.